Tuesday, July 12, 2022. Mr. Michel, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Ryan.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here. Six present, one absent, we do have a quorum. At this time, I would be looking for a motion to approve the agenda, which would also include approving all the items that are currently in consent business.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrence, any discussion?
Glad I'm back.
Ma'am Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. New business, we have the Utica High Homecoming Parade request. I believe we have Ms. Ava Sabolski, who is going to present tonight. Ava, could you step up to the podium and give us your name and address, please?
Good evening, Utica Council and everyone here for this month's meeting. My name is Ava Sabolski, and I am the President of Utica High Student Council. I would also like to introduce our Council's Parliamentarian, Gabby Baskovich. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for the opportunity to speak today. We appreciate your time. I come to you all in regards to Utica's longstanding community tradition, our homecoming parade this fall. Our parade would be held on September 23 from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. In order to hold this parade, we need the permission of the City Council and help from our city's police. It would be most beneficial to shut down the roads between Jimmy John's Field and the Utica High parking lot throughout downtown Utica. We are also asking for a police escort to contain traffic and ensure safety. The parade will be supervised by various staff, including our Council Supervisor, Melissa Kavonian. Thank you.
So I'm guessing the footprint's exactly the same as has been your past.
Yes, yeah, same start, same end.
Deputy Chief, do you have any concerns, sir?
None at all, Mayor. We've been doing this for, you know, as long as I've been here with the city and stuff. So we work with Shelby Township and get it all taken care of, so no issues at all.
Been doing it since I was a Utica citizen.
Just five or six years.
Right, right.
Any, any concerns from Council members?
Not at all.
If not, then I'd be, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the Utica High Homecoming Parade request?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Terrence, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. Look forward to it. We've got all our black and orange gear out.
I know, I'm really excited. And is there anything else we need to, like, further, like, discuss, like, I don't, I don't know, I've never done this before, this is my first year doing it, like, any papers?
Nope.
Great, thank you.
You've got all the information you need.
Just send an email to the, the fire chief, so he can have the fire engine there again.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approvals for the Gasoline Alley Car Show, August 13, 2022. I believe Rick is here to make a presentation. All Council members, I did leave the packet that Rick provided at your seat.
Yeah, it's pretty simple, it's just about the same as last year. I brought an estimated budget, or, or, it would be about $3,500 to put the show on, give or take a couple dollars, you know, because they advertise. Couple of things are going to change this show, I'm going to try, if we have as many cars as last year, we're going to try to wrap around on C.A.S. But if we don't have as many cars, I'll use that as a staging area, just like we do by Jimmy John's Field. The only other problem I saw, but actually it's a blessing, is because the road is closed now over here, so we can actually use it to load and unload the show. But if there's any other questions, it's just about the same as it always has been. Would you have the lions coming back?
For the breakfast.
Yeah, we need some vol, we need volunteers, you know, we need parking volunteers, and God, can't always come, you always come. I'd like to have Tom coming, and everybody.
That's the same, right?
If you have any questions, I, I have a map, yeah. A map, and I've got a post bunch of it for you.
And tonight, you're, I think you're requesting the road closures as well, right?
Right, right. Did I go on all the road closures with the chief?
Anyone? Nope?
Just had a comment, there's an additional road closure over recent years, correct?
Right.
Potentially Cass Avenue, just to make you aware, at least between Summers and...
Yeah, it's the castle, it's always been closed at, at Summers for a little while till we park them. But like I said, if we're going to use it, if we have as many cars as we had last year, we're going to need to use C.A.S.
So, just for the record, he's looking to possibly expand it, like we did other years.
Yeah, in the past, we used to do that.
Yes, yes, but for this year, he's looking to...
Yeah, but we always, we had a problem with, um, excuse me, with the sound.
Okay.
And everybody was, was like, you were in a different field, you know?
Right, right.
And our sound was, but I talked to the guy at the corner of the music store, and he's going to, obviously, like, just need to put some speakers up there, it was a good job.
Okay. I know at my American Legion meeting was last night, our monthly meeting, and I brought up the car show, and they're like, hey, we want to have the parade again. Like, I don't think that's in the plans.
You know, with that, you know, I'll tell you, you guys have all seen what the traffic is around here now.
Right.
Do you know how complicated it is and how hard it is to get these people not to come into the car show?
Right.
It's, it's really tough, you know, and, uh, I use about 40 volunteers that day, just to control the traffic and to control the people. We're now going to sort the cars a little different. In the car business, or the, uh, car show business, I should say, there's been a lot of animosity with these new supercars. The old class, the old men with the old classic cars don't like the new supercars. So, you know, can you smile? So what I've done is, now I've gone around, I've talked to everybody, and we're going to have a special spot. We're going to give them their due. It's going to be the supercars of the day, the classics of tomorrow, we're going to call it Tomorrowland. We're going to put all those kids in their own spot so they can play and leave us old men alone.
You know what, it, it makes a lot of sense.
It does, so everybody's going, see, at the end of the day, it's a party, so everybody wants, we want to have a good time. The only other thing is, is that sponsorships are a little bit down this year. I've been very busy with business, so I haven't been able to get out as much as I wanted to, to, you know, sell the show more. Plus, the, you know, the times are so bad right now, a lot of the businesses are struggling. I haven't pushed it like we did last year. I call once or twice, and then you can come, and come, and go.
There's a really nice article in the Macomb Current, Macomb Now Magazine, which is available, I believe in the lobby and in the counter at City, in the City Office. I know we're going to have the billboard on Hall Road and for the week prior to the event, so there's a lot of buzz, I think it's going to be a great event, very excited about it.
You know, I go to car shows every weekend, during the week I go, you know, and, like, I was in Marine City last weekend, and, uh, I must have, 30 guys must have come up to me and talked to me, oh yeah, I'm coming, you know?
Right, right.
So, like I say, that's why I want to have that area over there, because the last thing you want is to get overrun, we had almost, what, 350 cars?
Cars, yeah.
If 450 show up, we got to accommodate them. If it rains and we only have 200, you know, we can shrink this. So, I just want to be a little bit organized, you know, because I know the police department, you know, we got, I got to be as organized as possible. I know there's only, what, two officers on duty that day?
Well, yeah, but they'll be officers for it.
So, you know, I've seen that as many of the, of the repeat guys that took care, took care of the parking and the traffic, you know, because you have to, you have to man all, uh, most of, uh, stop, all the blockades, they have to be manned, because the, the people don't know where to go. You can have a detour sign right there, and they still don't know where to go, they won't be turning left onto, uh, Hawn, you know, they'll turn right and try to go the back way. So, is there anything else, got any other questions?
I'm just chatting.
Any advice, I need all the advice and all the help I can get, so.
No, any questions from Council?
No. We've been doing it a while, so.
Well, then we would be looking for...
What are the times up there?
Uh, well, the gates are going to open at 8 o'clock.
In the morning.
And we're going to be all done after the 50:50. It's been, uh, it's been 4 o'clock, but usually by 3:00, 3:30. We want, we want to get done as early as possible to respect the ballpark. We know they're having a doubleheader that night, and last year, we were all cleaned up by 4 o'clock, and everything went smooth.
And I went and talked to Andy, or, Andy and Dana, they were very happy in how we broke down and...
Yeah, I talked to Dana tomorrow, and she's on board. They're going to give us the billboard for a week.
All right, if there's no further discussion needed, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the necessary road closures and police and fire support for the Gasoline Alley Car Show on August 13.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by O'Donnell, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Rick.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
You know, I believe I skipped over item one on the agenda, public comments for items listed on the agenda. Is anyone here from the public that would want to, wanted to speak to any items on the agenda? And we'll open it up again for items not on the agenda towards the end of the meeting. Okay, then I will move forward. Department reports, I'll start with mine. First off tonight, I would be asking City, or Council members to approve the appointment of Mr. Jim Stone to Parks and Rec Commission. His very extensive resume is in your packet. Mr. Stone has been around the city for years and years, involved in different things. I know he's supported some of the events over at the library, I see him at many of the events we hold at Grant Park. So he's a longtime Utica resident, a lot of interest in our city. He's attended, I think, the last two or three Parks and Rec meetings and given the committee some really neat feedback. I think he'll be a valuable member on the committee. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Stone? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the appointment of Jim Stone to the Parks and Rec Commission.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrence, support by O'Donnell. In the discussion period, I'll read his certificate. Well, actually, let's take the vote first. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Jim, I'm going to go ahead and read your certificate of appointment. You are hereby notified that you have been duly appointed by the Council for the City of Utica at a regular meeting on Tuesday, July 12, 2022, to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission for the City of Utica. Term expires 2026. Boy, that seems like a long way out, doesn't it? So congratulations, sir. We appreciate your service. And we'll see you tomorrow night at Parks and Rec meeting.
Yeah, show, six.
Uh, six, yes.
Six.
Six, six.
Seven.
I agree. It used to be five.
Next item in your packet and on the agenda is our website redesign during budget sessions. We discussed the need to upgrade our, our website. Currently, our city website is not cross-platform capable. If you try to view it on a smartphone, it just simply doesn't work. In talking to our current web host person, we've got numbers, which are also in your packet. He also provided the different ready-to-use website designs that are available. The total cost for one year is $36.25, and that includes the annual subscription fee of $1,375 that we would be paying anyways, so I think that's very reasonable. Also, as part of that, we would be able to add a lot more media, as, I believe the last time the website was touched was 2013, if I, if I'm not mistaken. So technology has changed quite a bit. Now you can add, you know, video footage, more extensive graphic use. So as part of that, I would also tonight be asking for $1,500 to hire Ron Robinson Studios to provide photographs and drone video footage for use on the website. Part of that agreement is he's giving us a huge library of photos and video that he's taken over the years, and he's given us free usage of that for any purpose. So, you know, a lot of times, when, for the Christmas tree lighting, I'm scrambling to try to find photos, he's got photography of everything that's happened in Utica for years. And he said that we could use it not just for the website design, but for anything that we deem necessary. So, motion one would be to approve the sales agreement from Revised Software Services for the amount of $3,625 for year one costs.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Terrence, support by Sikora, any discussion from Council?
No.
Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, I would be looking for a motion to approve hiring Ron Robinson, Ron Robinson Studios to provide photographs and drone video footage for the website at a cost not to exceed $1,500.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrence, support by Sikora, any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Spending a lot of money tonight, you could tell, budget season just, budget just ended, right?
We're allocating a lot of money tonight.
Uh, next item for me is the light pole banners that we've been talking about for a while now. Again, during budget, we decided we could not really allocate the $14,000 necessary for flowers, but we decided to purchase brand-new light pole banners, the ones we have now. I think Bill would attest, we're basically, I noticed at North Vandike, there's like a couple blocks where we don't even have banners on the poles, I'm assuming you don't have any banners to put up there, right?
Unless you want snowflakes. We have some of those.
So the, the banners we have are, you know, tattered, we're running out of them.
I like those because they're murals.
The one thing I would like to make Council aware of, though, we're going, in this packet, we're going from cloth and silk screen technology to thick gauge, it's like 18-ounce vinyl, it's outdoor, you know, heavy-duty vinyl, but it's a digitally printed design, it's not screen, uh, silk screen. So, I don't, it won't last the 20 years or so that our current cloth silk screened with ink ones will, but we'll be able to do more vibrant photographic type of images. I talked to several of the people of the companies that you're going to see listed as providing quotes for us. The consensus seems to be, you know, if they're left out eight months of the year, you know, the summer versions that we're going to put out, we should get at least four years out of them. They think the winter ones probably get six years, maybe even seven, because, you know, you're not having that summer sun. So in talking to Bill, what I did at first was, I quoted this out as buying 100 total banners, two designs, 50 of each. And I quoted that out to every one of the seven companies you'll see listed on the, on the Agenda Item Summary form. You'll see that Banner Saver out of Traverse City, Michigan, came in the lowest. I talked to Bill about it, and he suggested that perhaps we should try to get more designs than two, so we would have more variety downtown. So I asked the number one, you know, company, bannersaver.com, to give me an additional quote, 160 total, four designs, 40 each. So you'll see those numbers, it's not a big difference in the dollar amount there. I think we have 77 poles that we would be hanging banners, so buying 160 would give us, you know, some extras if they get faded or damaged. It would also give Bill the ability to kind of keep it fresh and switch out the designs. So I would really like to see us go with option two, which would be four designs, 40 And we can also discuss, you know, which designs, I don't have that up as a vote, but feel free to give me your suggestions. Right now, I'm kind of leaning towards, and I think I, I didn't give myself a copy. An awesome resident who lives right around the corner from here, Haifa Rabah, is a graphic designer, and she provided three different series. You'll see her colored sheets here, and in the top-left corner of each is the Roman numeral. I really like, and I think they would look fantastic, series two, on the top right, one of them has an image from the mural on WeatherTech Building of a bicyclist, and right next to that is an image of our mural on the fire station. So I like either one of those, and maybe, you know, instead of the...
That was one of mine.
I also like the flower mural one on the second row on the left, which is like a blue or a purple, I don't know what kind of flower it is, but it's purple. Um, you know, I, I think some of these, I think they're all beautiful, but I think some of them, if, you know, once, once you put that image up on a light pole, it would kind of get lost if it has too much detail on it. So, I don't know, yeah, I'm definitely interested in hearing what Council, Council's opinion is, but I like those two, and I may be a little self-serving, but just to have variety, I kind of threw these two together, the, uh, the one with the, they're like single-color green and a brick red, brown. One is of the clock at Memorial Park, and the other one is some of the buildings in downtown. I think if we mix those two styles, it would kind of give variety, it would give Bill some options, but that's where I'm kind of leaning. So, maybe we should get, before we talk about designs, let's get our motions out of the way and see if we're going to do this. I would be looking for a motion to approve... Do I have this right?
Option two.
To purchase, yeah, this doesn't make sense. A motion to, uh, well, I'm not going to make the motion, I'm going to let you guys decide.
I'll make a motion for option two.
So we're looking at C2, option two.
For designs, 160 total, for a cost not to exceed $5,500.
$5,500.
Support.
Thank you.
Motion by Terrence, support by Townsend, any discussion?
No.
And we can discuss which designs after we do that. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Ryan.
Yes.
Townsend.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. So we're buying 160 banners, four designs, 40 each. Do we have any feedback on which designs we should go with?
I'm prone to, um, always the clock tower, whether we use yours or the one on page three, number two, I have it, is number two on the top. I like, I like the clock, I like the river, I like the river because it represents Utica, you know, I've lived here 46 years, and the river's always been, you know, a part, you know, as kids, we walked down Davis Street, and the kids looked at the river, you know, wherever, the river is just part of Utica, so I'm really pulled toward that. I also like the flowers and the biker. Hey, I got four choices, come on!
Bike.
Here's mine, in number, numerical order.
Okay.
I also like the river, if I, you go to number three, I like the river on that shot.
I'm worried the river will, you wouldn't be able to, it's beautiful. My concern is up on the pole, you won't be able to see that it's a river.
Can we get samples? What do you think, Bill? This is, I mean...
Bill will put up whatever.
No, I understand that, no, I understand that, but, you know, you're hanging them, you know it shows up a little bit better.
He gave me input, and your, and your, your input was valuable.
To be honest with you, I have not been provided the samples to have, and I would prefer, at this stage, I'm, I'm fine, I, I think you're okay.
I think they'd be okay, too.
Yeah, I mean, the other, the other option I would, I mean, just a suggestion, if you still want it.
Not make a decision tonight. I agree.
Let's do that, let's do that, rather than delivering.
I'm doing this all right.
So you guys all have color copies, I'll shoot, I'll put out, we've approved buying them.
I'll scan.
I'll put out an email and try to gather up consensus, and before I purchase them, I'll make sure that we're all in agreement of what four designs we're getting.
At least one.
And next?
Let me see, there's six of us, we needed six.
Even though the money's been allocated?
It's still deliberating, yeah.
Yeah, I, we might get in trouble on the OP meetings, I do that, yeah.
You can't, you can't vote on a, well, you're not voting, you're just offering your opinion.
Yeah, this isn't a vote.
Individual council members certainly could contact the mayor and let them know.
Well, that's always...
Yeah, but I wouldn't do an email with an email response with everyone included.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay, everyone.
I was kind of considering it more like a blind, you know, just submit your suggestions.
So we're safe to do that?
Yes.
Linda, so everyone send me your choices, you know, send me four choices.
Okay.
And individually, not as a group, and we'll see where we're at. My goal is to get these ordered quick, though, because I would love to have them up for the car show, so downtown has a real fresh, nice look.
So what's your deadline?
13th August.
I would like to have this by Friday, yeah.
Friday.
I mean, ordered by Friday, so.
So you want it tomorrow?
Let's say Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow afternoon. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a big decision, you got the four sheets, and I think I sent you everything a couple weeks ago in an email, too, so, individually, of course. All right, so we've got approval. I would like to, to end my reports, I would like to congratulate Councilman Deion, he was just promoted to Lieutenant in his position, he's not able to make it tonight, because of, you know, his new assignment, they, he didn't have time to get work adjusted to be able to, to make the council meeting tonight, but very happy for him, it's his second promotion, big promotion here in less than a year and a half, so.
Good for him.
Yeah, excellent. Does anyone else on Council have anything to report tonight?
I just want to say I'm happy to be back. I feel like I've been gone forever.
You were.
I was. Oh, really, who else is going to say, second, right after you say, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
We missed you.
Thank you.
We missed you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from Council? Have anything to report? Nope? In closed session, we discussed a tax tribunal settlement. I would be looking for a motion to approve what we discussed in closed session.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. I believe Councilwoman Torenzi is giving the library report today?
I am, I am. Katie couldn't be here tonight, and she wrote this up, so I'm just going to read what she wrote because she did a really nice job. The library would like to give a very grateful thank you to Sherri Townsend for all of her help and support with the painting of the tunnel project for the kids during our summer reading program. All of the participants had a great time partaking in the unique occasion to come together and do something for the community. People using the path that day were very vocal about the project in a very positive way, and many told the kids, "Thank you." It was such a great experience and not likely one they will ever forget anytime soon. And it wouldn't have been possible without Sherri's help. And the summer reading program had another successful event yesterday. The reptarium came and brought some very wonderful and interesting creatures. They did a fantastic job, and the presenter, Chris, was very patient. Even though we had around two-hundred in attendance, and that was over our capacity, sorry, Kevin, who is not here, Chris took the time to allow everyone to touch all of the reptiles, which made the event even more fun, and we look forward to having them return in the future. So that was great. And also, I feel like a newscaster, the library now has a notary public available by appointment only. Notary services are free to Utica residents and five dollars for non-residents. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilwoman Torenzi?
I'll refer you to Katie.
Fire, fire tonight, Chief Willsec is excused. He had a funeral that he had to attend, so we have no fire report. Police? Deputy Chief Kluzney?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Included in your packet is Agenda Item Summary, and it's something that we discussed during budget season, and that's Lexipol Services. And just so you remember, what Lexipol does is, is they're going to take our Policies and Procedures Manual, and they're going to go through, and they're going to fully update them into state federal updates. Includes an online app, includes the services, and all the updates that come out through the year. So what I'd be asking for, if there's not any more questions on the Lexipol, would be a motion to enter into agreement with Lexipol so we can start the implementation process. And then subsequent motions to approve the expenditures. One is going to be for the annual fee for Lexipol, and then the other, the other fee is going to be for the one-time expenditure, and that's going to cover the full implementation and stuff. So as we're moving forward, it's just going to be that annual fee that we're going to be responsible for.
So it looks like Deputy Chief has three motions. First motion is to enter into an agreement with Lexipol to update the Utica Police Department's policy manual.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Torenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Second motion is to approve the expenditure of nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and ninety cents for the annual subscription to Lexipol to be taken from GL-101-301-734-000. Dues and publications.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Torenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. And the final motion, to approve the expenditure of twenty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars for the one-time implementation fee to be taken from GL-101-301-981-000. Equipment purchase.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Deputy Chief.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Anything else to report tonight, sir?
Uh, no, that's all that we have, thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Lang, DPW report?
Just a little bit of an update or an explanation. If you noticed an interruption in the traffic on Van Dyke last week, we actually threw the direction of the mayor's office, the police department, and I believe city council to install the delineators along Van Dyke. We actually threw the support of the mayor and the police department, I want to thank them for allowing my suggestion to be put forth to allow us to close the road so that your staff, our staff, could properly place all of those delineators in a safe manner so that we could go home that night. So I'm really thankful for the support of everyone. I know there was an inconvenience, but, you know, it's really appreciated when we're allowed to, uh, you know, make other people, give them a little bit of a disturbance to affect our job. We appreciate the support of the police department and the mayor and the community for letting us do that, so.
Absolutely.
And the job, actually, it went off without a hitch. The, I don't think I could have hit the target any better as far as the amount of disturbance.
I don't think you had to close the forty-five minutes, I don't think.
We closed it, I want to say nine o'clock, and at nine-fifty, we were already back in the yard with all the barrels picked up. So it went off really well. And, you know, when you get support like that, you can actually, for us, it made a big difference, so. We appreciate that. Everything else, you know, the things you see around, they're getting done, we keep poking at things, and if you see anything else, feel free to offer them up to the mayor that needs to be done, and he'll figure out a way to get us to do that.
Well, I've got to say, the DPW has just gone above and beyond the last probably three weeks. I know I've been throwing things at them left and right. I feel bad because that list was getting longer and longer, and over the last three weeks, the DPW crew has just banged out so many things I had on the list. They've been doing an amazing job, so please tell everyone down at the shop, thank you from me and council.
Thank you.
It's much appreciated.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, there's more on the list that we expect to do. And actually, just for instance, the pathway project there where we refilled all the, the tripping hazard and all that. I mean, the growth in the park with the, believe it or not, in the middle of a drought, the grasses took well, and so that's all coming, coming together. We'll finish up some other good projects, so. Anyway, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
What are delineators?
It's, it's, it's just a marker, it's just a marker that identifies a, an area or a direction or a lane, yeah.
Okay.
You'll see them a lot, like on curves and things. They'll be upright, flexible poles with markers on them. It's just for your visual. But the ones we're talking about are in the middle of Van Dyke, just south of 59.
Oh, by the Puff store.
You got it.
Those are it.
It's well-needed, so good job, yeah.
So we, we got to move on, we can't really have back and forth. Anything else, Mr. Lang from DPW?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Treasurer report? Mr. Paternoster?
No report.
Nothing to report, thank you, sir.
I was making room for it.
Madam Clerk, administration, anything to report?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, I know we have the chairman tonight. I don't know if you actually got a copy of the AI, the Agenda Item Summary? Do you have it?
I did not.
Okay, I'll go ahead and handle this for you.
Oh, okay.
We, she was just appointed last month, and it was in the middle of a lot of different things going on. So I actually wrote up her Agenda Item Summary for her tonight. The Parks and Rec Department approved the purchase of two swings, both to be installed in Grant Park at a cost not to exceed a thousand dollars. Mr. Lang, again, graciously agreed to cover anything over the a thousand, the thousand dollars per swing. I got a quote from Summit Supply, which is the vendor we use to buy the benches, swings, and tables down at Memorial Park, and that's included in your packet. The total cost, including shipping, was, oh, and actually, they erroneously included sales tax, which will get removed. So it's roughly thirty-five hundred dollars, I believe. So... This requires Parks and Rec, though, to ask for an amendment to their budget. So item number one, we would be looking for a motion to approve a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2023 Parks and Rec budget, increasing by two thousand. Each accounts 101-753-692-040, AFB transfers in Parks and Rec, and 101-753-981-000. Equipment purchase.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by O'Donnell, any discussion from council? And motion number two would be to approve the purchase of two park swings from Summit Supply Corp. for a price not to exceed thirty, three-thousand-seven-hundred dollars, with two thousand to be charged to the Parks and Rec Equipment Purchase Account, 101-753-981-000, and the remainder to the Parks Department, Parks Development Account, 101-751-974-000.
Mr. Mayor, can we vote on that last one? We didn't vote, we just did a...
Oh, we didn't vote?
A motion, a support.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go back. So we got, we got support, we got the motion in support.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, a roll call vote for the first motion, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Let me catch my breath before I read this again.
Uh, so moved on that.
It is listed in your packet, everybody.
Support.
Motion by O'Donnell, support by Torenzi, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Ryan?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, I would, I would just like to say one thing. I don't know how you picked the Pro family, but thank you.
From Jake Shepard, who had suggested it.
Well, you know, it was a great suggestion because the Pros have been so involved from the time Ken knows, when Jim Pro was on council. Their, their children and Gene are still very active in the Lions and the community, and they're always given the library money. So it touched my heart when I saw that, to be honest, so, thank you.
Yeah, one...
Objection for the suggestion.
It touched, yeah.
Yeah, one swing is going to be dedicated to the Pro family, and the other swing will be dedicated to the Michael Schereta family. Again, thank you, everybody. And next on the agenda, our city attorney, Ms. McGrail.
You know, we had discussions in closed session, but that does not require a vote on anything here today, so I have nothing further to add.
Nothing else to update us on tonight?
Nothing else.
Excellent. At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor to communication from the public for any item not on the agenda. Anyone is invited to address council and allotted three minutes to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council? Ms. Schmidt, please. Please give us your name and address.
Lori Schmidt, 45866 Kensington, Utica. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Marvin Kezey for the donation that he gave us for our movie in the park that we'll be doing. So I just figured he was here, and I'd like to publicly thank him for that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stone, do you want to say something? Please give your name and address, sir?
Yeah, Jim Stone, 45280, Clinkhammer. It's more a question, and I think it'd be more directed to Bill here. What would be the procedure if a citizen has a sampling tree in their yard that they want transplanted to a park or a public space?
Good question.
Or is, is there a procedure?
The easiest procedure, possibly the most correct one, would be to present your suggestion to city council and get them to approve it, it's not that difficult.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Hey, guys, and I'm sure I'm a familiar face, Marvin Kezey, 44825 Van Dyke Avenue. Currently own and operate Puff Utica. I'm here to address, you know, obviously delineators. Not to say anything, Bill, but if they're for the direction of, to show the direction of the lane, the traffic lane. Mayor Goss, I've told you before, that traffic lane tapers down at Hall Road from the traffic light, so that lane's always been an issue prior to Puff being there. So I feel like the delineators weren't put for the direction of the lane, they were put so people can't make a left out of my business, or a left into our business, or a left into the gas station or hydro pros. It's been impacting our business somewhat. I can show proof between numbers from last month's sales versus this month's sales. Obviously, the summer months are busier months, but we do a lot in the community out of our shop. Obviously, we donate to the kids, we donate to the Lions Club, we're doing that, we do the gas station, or the, the car, the car show, donating seventy-six thousand dollars to the city park for the basketball courts. I know we got that approved not too long ago. I'm doing improvements down Greeley Street. Between my family and I, we've probably done over fifteen million dollars with the business in the city between the development on Hall Road and Van Dyke to selling the hydro pros, selling the property, the car wash, developing Puff Utica, developing the cultivation. And we still are interested in doing more opportunities in the city. So I was just asking, you know, if we can somehow find a way where we can direct traffic in a better way, instead of just putting up delineators, maybe moving the traffic light down to Riverland, making that a yellow lane access to our property. Because technically, when they're merging into that lane where it's tapered off at, that's also illegal. That's a double striped lane. I'm not going to sit here and, you know, teach law or anything like that, but they should have put delineators down the whole V, and then left it open at the open section where cars can actually fit all the way in, instead of being in the way of southbound traffic. Because I've showed you footage of, you know, vehicles that stack up at the light, they merge into the, the driving lane, I would say the lane closest to the yellow lane. And what happens is all that turn, turning off of M-59 to go southbound Van Dyke, you know, people try to merge over at the same time cars are turning, and it's going to cause accidents there as well. So it's definitely something that I think that you guys should address. It's almost, you know, stopping a problem in one section and then dumping it somewhere else. My customers have to make a right, they're forced to make a right out of the property now. Prior to me opening up, there wasn't a sign that said, "No left-hand turn," a right turn only off of Greeley. Now it says, "Right-hand turn off of Greeley," I was okay with that. Out of respect for the city, I put, "No left-hand turn" or "Left-hand turn not recommended" out of our lot because I didn't want to cause accidents. That's the last thing I want to do, is cause harm to the public. We do see over forty thousand people a month out of our shop. I know the city has around five thousand residents. I have a lot of upset customers. I got a lot of customers threatening my business every day. I'm not going to come here because it's hard to get here. We got to travel northbound, take a U-turn in the middle of the road, almost get hit there, or we got to go all the way down Hall Road where that U-turn's also backed up. They're forced to turn right to go down Van Dyke, there's no U-turn, there's nowhere to turn around, they can't just circle around in the middle of the road. They'd have to pull into a local business, which causes issues, you know? So that's why I'm here, I just wanted to address it at this council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. We normally don't comment back and forth during public comments, but if you have something important to say...
Well, I, I don't have to, I can let it go, we can, just in regards to that, I don't know if you want to share with what we talked about? As far as the study?
Oh, and I think, I've shared that with Mr. Kezey as well. We're looking right now and doing a new traffic study, is that what you're talking about, Bill? Yeah, a new traffic study, you know, with an engineering firm to give us suggestions, you know, to look at our issues, look at our problems. We obviously want to support our businesses, but we have to be concerned with public safety as well. You know, we can't turn away from traffic violations that are taking place. I'm fielding many, many calls. I mean, if you look at our social media, I checked it before the meeting, literally five minutes before the meeting, somebody was on saying, you know, they want more delineators.
Yeah.
They want the delineators to go even further south, so, I mean...
So at first, like I said, the, the no left-hand turn, I understood, the delineators, but also, we sat down, talked to Chief Cody. They said officers out there for hours at a time, just ticketing everybody that made that left-hand turn, and customers are worried, you know? They're, they're legally buying cannabis in a city that supports it, right? And then they get pulled over once they leave the facility. Them not thinking they, you know, made an illegal left turn, but possibly being worried or concerned about the purchase they just made, is it legal? Like, they know it's legal, but it's just a worry, right?
Yeah.
That's why I had to address that that day, was like, look, you know, it's, give me some time with the customers to kind of understand the traffic, you know, pattern first before just sending officers outside to ticket them immediately after making the left-hand turn, I felt like was almost an attack to my business. But, you know, we'll, we'll figure out a better solution, hopefully, in the future. I just wanted to tell you guys, you know, with the support of the council, I know you guys, obviously, you know, we went through the process of applying, getting picked. We put our best application forward. We won the application based off, you know, our traffic study, our business, plans, our SOPs, and everything else. I don't want to harm the community, but, you know, the business was open, we were operating. We don't agree, car accidents are terrible, I don't want them to happen anywhere, but it is also affecting our business, so building a plan around it, instead of eliminating one thing and then dumping it somewhere else, I think would be a, a better move. I don't want them to happen anywhere, but it is also affecting our business, so building a plan around it instead of eliminating one thing and then dumping it somewhere else, I think would be a, a better move for the city moving forward, right?
Right.
We're trying to grow Utica, bring people to the city, uh, increase business in the area. Instead, right now, we're literally, you know, for, for my business, I would say, people are scattering around. Do I go up Van Dyke, take an illegal U-turn? Do I go south on Van Dyke, take an illegal U-turn, shoot back north? It's, it's a tough decision to make when you leave the place. I mean, I'm sure if you guys travel, try it out, pull into our lot, figure out how to get back north. It's almost impossible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kezey. Does anyone else from the audience have anything they'd like to present to council? Last call? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Sikora?
Support.
Support by Torenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.